Okay.
Five o'clock, our April meeting. Call order, roll call.
Commissioner Capagrosa?
Here.
Livermore?
There.
Middleton?
Erp.
Rondo?
Here.
Seaver?
Here.
We stand by the allegiance, nothing but dirt's on it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Free public comment by sweep.
I just wanted to make a mention.
That's you!
Come on, hi. Joan Potter, Summer here, um, oh, note of township. Um, just came to remind you all that Earth Fest is coming up this week. And I can, if you wanna make note or take these, there's the schedule. Um, and it'll, on the twentieth, Jen Hill will be here to talk about the legislation. I know there was some discussion within the commission about, uh, the, uh, petition that's being circulated as far as setback for the solar arrays. Um, so she'll be talking about that legislation. That might be something of interest, cause I know there was some discussion at one point in time. Um, also, there'll be, uh, a, a program on electric vehicles. And I also know that's been a discussion, there was concern, not concern, but you didn't understand the difference between, um, a plug-in, an EV, a hydro, which is a hydrogen pack, it's a hydrogen, hydrogen cell. And they have them mainly around cities, um, not so much out in the country. And then just, uh, uh, the, the difference between gas-powered and solar. So, that's on Tuesday, maybe, uh, would hope that you'd be interested in that. Uh, Wednesday is, uh, regenerative agriculture, which, um, gentleman from the extension is coming. Dr. De Decker, and he's talking about that. And then on Thursday, uh, the same gentleman that'll be talking on Tuesday will be there, his name is Steve Waller. And he is a retired educator from Northern Michigan University. And he'll be talking about the difference between solar and hydro and electric, solar, hydro, and let's see, there's wind. So, these are all things that I know from time to time, after listening to the video that has come across in your conversations. And I would invite you to come, uh, and become informed, so that you're able to, uh, identify, you know, what, what, what is the truth? So, any questions?
Is there something tonight at the gallery?
We're not at the gallery of the, at the city, so.
Um, yes, that is the presentation from the Michigan Environmental Council, that, um, Acres, the group that I belong with, they, they, uh, involved us in a partnership. And this is where all that programming that I've been coming in here and telling you about, Solar 101, and, uh, financing and that kinda thing. So, they're actually doing a presentation about what the, the grant is all about, uh, what they've accomplished, and where they're gonna go with it. And they're hoping, they're anticipating to, uh, uh, go after another funding, um, based upon how this turned out as far as, uh, the, excuse me, the, uh, residents and businesses in Alger County, um, adopting solar or adopting renewable energy, promoting renewable energy and energy efficiency. That was the whole goal of their project. So, this, uh, after this amount of money is used and, and the time that it has elapsed, they're gonna follow it up with, uh, another, uh, proposal and hopefully get more money, so that we can actually, uh, maybe put some training in to effect for electricians and plumbers to understand, uh, heat pumps and solar arrays and that kinda thing as far as installation, um, creating some, some jobs maybe even, so. Thanks for asking, do you?
Thank you.
So, okay, thank you. I do watch those videos, so, you know, I'll try to come in and, and answer the questions, but I don't stay around the earth first. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also, if anyone is interested, I have the fancy dancy posters, if you wanna post them anywhere.
I think you can post, they posted everything else on the front door, you might as well post that.
Well, I'll. Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you, have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you, you too.
Provide the agenda.
Oh, I seen somebody, oh, public comment?
Well, actually, yeah, I just wanted to double check on the five-year rec plan, it wasn't updated on the website, besides the statement I was gonna come down and watch that all.
Oh, we had your comments come back, but we didn't get anything from, um, Trevor. And we were talking about it, and I guess we're gonna talk about that later here too, but, um, maybe, if we're gonna look at that, we should probably go with all township supervisors, and ask them to get all, say, everybody else that we're missing.
Yeah, all, all good, I, I, I don't, I, I, just that's why I care, that's why I wanted to double check, so.
Agenda, any changes on the agenda, anybody?
I'm seeing.
Sir? Rule call?
Commissioner Capagrosa?
Yes.
Livermore?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Rondo?
Yes.
Seaver?
Yes.
Six consent agenda, any questions on any of them?
I'd like to, uh, question each.
Okay.
And, uh, um, with your, uh, wanting the, um, Elder County office open, I've got monthly reports here from three different outfits. And they're, what, basically, mainly, one or two, three sentence long.
I got the same thing.
And they, and they don't have, they can't afford to, uh, open the Elder County for an extra day. And there's one guy in here every month, one sentence. That's what he's done for the, the month. So, I, I question this with, uh, L M A S, we.
It's a hard one. It's, it's a bad thing, is that we're, we're in with them.
I know, I know, but it's, if, if, all they have is these few reports, what, what, what are, there's this report, what are we paying for? That's a month.
That's, that's not him, that's, that whole department did that month, that's what the department.
Well, yeah, well, he's department head, and that's.
That's what we get. But we don't have.
I don't think we have a choice, but I don't want to bring it to the attention of the board.
On my side every time we go to the meeting.
What you're trying to bring up with?
There's two, two women that interview that.
You renew that agreement yearly, I think?
Yeah, but if you look, there's, there's again.
I, I know.
Big undertaking, taking on or so.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. No, I'm just, I'm just saying that, you know, probably gonna bring it up again.
And it's, you know, we can't think Elder County, it's a, it's a decision made by whole, by the four counties. Got, that's the four counties, and that's what we gotta do.
Again, it's kinda off the topic, but. My, my understanding correct, are they there, are they present in the building? And they just don't open the doors?
Yep.
I don't know how you can't not afford to open the doors, if you're already there doing work.
Yeah, well, they say that's the day that they, the answer I got, um, is that's the day they can catch up on all their support.
Yeah, I think we should bring it up again, when it comes time to us, renew our agreement.
Well.
And, we're, we're gonna stay with it, but that's our time to.
We've been pressing at every meeting we bring up.
I know, I know you had it, and I've had it. Cause you, I, that's a sticking point with me too, is if you're in the, you're in the building, you're working. Well, it's a public service, you know, and answer the phone, how many, how many people actually walk in there every day?
I had a hard time, I sat there, when they opened one morning, for a while, to see, maybe they'll actually go in there. Yeah, I mean, workers either.
But.
I think, I think you're correct, we're not done with it yet.
No, it's frustrating.
It is, it's, uh. I don't dis, I can't disagree with you on that, see, we don't always fight.
Yeah, you're actually smart. Anyway, I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Any other? Questions on anything?
I would move that we accept the consent agenda.
Have a second.
Rick.
Right.
Who gets my moment?
Roll call, check it out.
Commissioner Capagrosa?
Yes.
Livermore?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Rondo?
Yes.
Seaver?
Yes.
And everybody have a chance to look at the minutes, find anything discrepancies? From a couple of articles and job fix already, so.
And, uh, except minutes.
Sir? Roll call?
Commissioner Capagrosa?
Yes.
Livermore?
Yep.
Middleton?
Yes.
Rondo?
Yes.
Seaver?
Yes. Number eight, five-year recreation plan.
Um, we had some discussion with that last meeting, I wasn't here, but I watched it. Um, we had an idea of postponing it maybe till next month, it's okay. We're talking about, uh, we had a lot of, some questions, we'll bring it in some other sites that should be on there. And if we're doing that, maybe we should look at all the supervisors in the county, and put all the sites on there. Joel said he would be able to try to get ahold of them next week early, and have it for the next committee meeting.
Too bad to make whatever adjustments I need to.
Do it all at once, that's okay with everybody else? And then, just for your information, now Rock River is getting their own.
Right.
So, no, that's the thing, do we still put them in ours, even though that they're gonna have their own also?
Mm-hmm, I think so, because it's, we're a giant wish list, so, rather have something in there and never need to.
Well, if we ever, they ever had a grant for, like, a county-wide thing, that would put it in there, they'd still be able to get that.
Better to put more in.
Yeah.
On this thing, so we don't, oh, yeah, there's no one five years, we could have to turn on redo it, so.
I don't know if that's what the board wants to do, or?
I would move that we postpone any action on the five-year rec plan until next month, if you keep having a chance to make a difference.
Also, I can do that. Roll call on that?
Commissioner Capagrosa?
Yes.
Commissioner Livermore?
Yep.
Commissioner Middleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Number nine, discussing pro pilot camping at Hamley Field, might use that more if we want to ask.
Um, we need to get our language set, it's, uh, it says a little paragraph in your packet, it is, uh, the paragraph, although it's got, I don't know which number on, I think it's three, is where it will fall in the airport policy, we're gonna bring that to the committees next month. But so that we can move forward on getting some things going, getting some work done on it, we need to get permission from the board that, yes, we're gonna allow this. There are some extra steps that I found out that we might need to check into, I'm gonna, I gotta get ahold of music township to make sure, whether maybe some, maybe they want some paperwork of their own, but I will check on that and.
And ego.
Yeah. So, but I will run them down, but the first step is for us to say that, yes, we are going to allow this. That it's not gonna be general public camping, it's only gonna be for the pilots and their passengers. They have to bring their equipment with them, they can't, they can't fly in here and rent an RV from somebody to have them drop it off. The tent, your gear, all has to come, has to come, and your plane with you, and it has to leave in your plane. We're not gonna put a dumpster over there for your garbage, you know?
It's a, thank you.
Pack it, pack it, leave no trace. You know, all it is gonna be is an alternative to them, like last summer, we saw a couple times where the guys pitched their little tent right under the wing of their plane. This gets them, so they're not out in the middle of the field. Put them down there in that chunk of trees that we're not using down on the south end, and they love it. These recreation guys, that's what they love, it'll be a spot off the end of the runway, that complies with MDOT and FAA requirements. It'll be more than a hundred and twenty-five feet off the edge of the runway, so they can basically taxi right over there. Tie their plane down, and there'll be a couple, there'll be some clear spots, or if the undergrowth has been removed, so that they can pitch their tent there.
Hopefully they'll grab a bike out of the hangar and run downtown, spend some money.
The bikes, we're not a hundred percent sure on the bikes, really, but there's gonna be a car there for them.
Yeah.
Car's a done deal, and they worked out, uh, they've set up a private group with, for pilots, to work out, like, a, kind of like a reservation thing, that, hey, I'm gonna be coming.
In your car?
Me and this person are coming, we'd like to use the car, is anybody else gonna be there, so they can kinda work out between themselves that, if they're gonna run back up, cause more people come in three hours later, they'll run back up, pick them up, and bring them in and go.
Whose car?
Um.
The Husky donated one day.
It's a combination between the Rome Foundation and the Visitors Bureau.
They had nothing to do with us.
Nope, no cost, no cost to us, they share it, they fuel it.
The other comment I'd like to make on this, is the people of Alger County have worked to get this airport into Alger County's hands.
Yep.
So, I would like to add to that, uh, Alger County residents able to tent out there.
That's what else?
That's gonna be a problem.
Well.
That's made.
Start running in.
Then, I don't.
Because it's non-aviation use that. Well, non-aviation camping.
But that, there's area out there that is not aviation.
The whole, the entire property is aviation property.
Is it?
The entire, the entire, eight hundred plus acres, no. It is, the property is an aviation property.
So, I asked them about being owned by the county, as public property, you know, what's it?
And then we're also, I'm sorry.
Yeah, how's it, how can we, say, aside, saying, how can we tell one person they can camp, and one can't? Just because you can afford a plane, where you can't there, but since it's Elder County, it's paying taxes for it, you can't camp there. It's just a hard, I mean, I don't think many are going to, but it's, look in the future, this is gonna come up. Somebody's gonna camp there, and then somebody's gonna say this, there's a way of getting around that with zoning, cause zoning will only approve it for different things also.
Mm-hmm.
But that's still, I'm saying with you, I bring that question up was, you know, this is Elder County property. Um, I don't, personally, I don't like, um, Elder County shouldn't be interfering with business, in business to be camping, this is more of a specialized thing, I guess, it's just letting them do it? I don't know, I, I got mixed feelings on the whole thing.
Well, if you.
And that, that was what, and that was the point that I was writing a note about, if you open it up to county residents, now you're competing with local businesses.
Well, you are anyway.
No.
Yes, you are.
Where can you land your plane and?
They can land their plane and go get a hotel.
They can take that car.
But we're not competing camping-wise with any of the local.
Because we're not charging them to camp.
We're not charging them, and there's no place else that they can land their plane, take their tent out of their plane, camp.
But you're taking that amount of money away from a hotel downtown.
If they can find a hotel.
If they can find, and, and not all of them are gonna, yeah, that's the thing.
I don't think we're hurting the fine hotel.
But still, you're, you're giving a privilege to somebody that's not a member of this county, or county.
But they're also, those are where the donation money's gonna come to fund this, so we don't have to use any taxpayer dollars to fund the airport that we now own.
If I may, may?
Sure.
I know that right now you're focused on the camping, but if you, um, last week had gone over what we had talked about, and what we had talked about in the committees, we are trying to find ways that this can also benefit the, uh, locals, which may be a dog park, in which everybody would like to take a place, cause that's what it's used for a lot of the time, is to take your dog for, you know, walks. So, we're trying to work on, maybe that is something that we can incorporate for the locals. They also have the bike trail that we're gonna try and get, they're working on getting that, so the bike trail comes through, so they can go through that part of town, and get more business from those on bikes. So, we aren't saying no, it's, we're ma, doing our best to make sure that nothing falls on the taxpayers. And we're still incorporating that that land is still used by our county and their local people.
I have sent a proposed policy about the dog area.
Yeah.
To the prosecutor, so he can look it over, cause I don't wanna, like that, I don't wanna, before you and I take it up to committee, I figure we need to know, you know, is that something liability-wise, we're even gonna be allowed to do legally? But, so we got him checking on that, you know?
So, we are trying, and I wouldn't say that we're trying to make money away from.
No, but it's, it's, it's a county property, that airport.
Yeah.
And it seems to me that it should be exercised or being able to use by the county, not by some guy flying an airplane in.
But it was specifically put in the county's hands for aviation.
It, it was, it was fought with the county. It was, the county fought ten years to get that. And I'm kinda disappointed that the lady that done all the fighting, and, and finally secured that, is not on that airport board. Kathy Pullen should be on that board.
Did she ask you, did she come during the meetings?
And the only board that there is outside of, is the advisory committee, that has absolutely no power. All they can do is make recommendations to the airport committee, who then has to bring it to the board for approval anyhow.
I understand that, but that woman fought a long time to get that airport land into the county.
Yeah.
Hands.
She sat here, she was here last week.
Yeah.
And actually, after the meeting, once the camera turned off, she congratulated me on the work we've been doing to get things moving forward, so.
She did, she told me that too, I talked to her.
So, we had, we had a nice conversation about.
Yeah.
All the effort that was put in beforehand, not only by her, but by our local business people that donated the land, to get the swap happen, you know, there's a lot of people that were involved and pushing really hard to get this to happen.
Yep, there was.
We're trying to honor the spirit of that, and.
It's a work in progress.
And, you know, quite frankly, this is, this is a potential revenue stream, through donations, so that we don't have to dip into the county coffers.
The only reason I pour this, is because it's not on a lake, it's not on anything that somebody would wanna camp on, really. And it's surrounded by national forests that you'll get permit and camp anywhere there also. They could go right across the street to camp, in the same area, have the same.
They can?
Yeah, it's now national forest, all the way around that, you can go right.
Operate across the, the chain going up the assault down there.
They can, right outside of road, which they do right now.
Pilot can do the same thing.
Well, he can't bring his pain over there.
Oh, no, but he can walk.
Yeah.
I think you're, um, you're giving a lot of privileges to a guy that owns a plane. Be able to, and, and keeping the residents of the county out of it. But I'm not saying they're going to.
Yeah, yeah.
They probably won't, but it might be wise to put that in there.
You know, again, that's, we fall into the same thing of, you know, we go unblock all the roads now, and we let them drive in there to look at the trees, or do whatever else they want, and then, you know, we start getting into, it's, it's an airfield. We've got a, and most things that happen there are gonna have to be tailored to be somehow tied to aviation. Especially if we, if we ever increase our license from the lowest level, then there's gonna, so, we're gonna hit more requirements where you can't have any non-aviation activities. Like, if we upped our license, we'd have to charge the sheriff's department rent on their building, because it's on airport property, even though it's the county. That's another reason we wanna stay where we're at, because we maintain more control of the basic.
Okay.
At the basic utility level, we maintain a lot more control, even going to that next step. All of a sudden, MDOT and the FAA start saying, well, you gotta have this, you gotta do that, you can't have this, you can't have that. You know, and we still have some of that, but it allows us the freedom that we can, you know, we can potentially, as long as the liability all works out, have a place for folks to run their dogs, under their control.
Under FAA rules, can anybody camp there right now?
I would have to double check that. And right now pilots can, according to the states.
Right.
Cause that's, that's MDOT aviation. It doesn't say, it's, it specifies pilot camping in the guide, so, you know. MDOT's gonna turn around and tell us that that's a, that's a owner's problem, you know? Again, we jump our licensing level, now you've, now you've, that's when you start, you've hit all, all the fencing requirements, you start hitting all kinds of extra requirements, you know? Yeah, it's just not worth playing around, I, you know, I think we can find other ways for people of Alger County to use the, use some of that property that we've got up there, via the bike trails, be a spot for them to, even if they have to keep their dog, like, I walk my kids home on a thirty-foot lead. You know, but if I take her up there, boy, she can really, she can range, she can roam, there's new stuff for her to smell, you know? We wanna find ways so that the recreational pilots can use it, and the people. We need to balance what we allow each to do, you know?
That was reasonable, I mean?
Yeah, we're, we're trying, nothing's perfect.
Yeah.
But allowing them to camp.
I wouldn't wanna see this.
And they're also gonna be, because they have, they have access to the runway too, it's another, you know, that they're gonna direct, there's nothing.
I wouldn't wanna see this as an improved site, this is the same, they're gonna have the same site then, as if they went across the road in the Forest Service. If, I wouldn't wanna see this ever getting to be an improved site, where it has bathrooms.
No, that's not, that's not the.
Anything like that.
Yeah, that is not the.
Same thing, the, the, some of you wanna drop the tree, man.
As rustic is rustic, we'll get the dead trees out of your way.
Allowing them.
Yeah.
And if they didn't have the opportunity to go right across the street and do it for free, I'd probably definitely.
And, you know, and, and the thing is, we can change our minds later. We don't have, we're not, this isn't, even if we approve it, we can always come back and say, you know, this isn't working, we need, it's our policy. So, we can change it, if we do, or adjust it, we can do what we need to, to. I'm sure, anybody have any more questions, anything else they can try and, try and answer for you?
No, I, I just think that it's belongs to the people of Alger County.
Mm-hmm.
And the people of Alger County have more precedent over there than a pilot. It's their property.
And that's why I think we're, they're. On the camping, probably, you know, I'm not, you know, but I wanna find ways that people can still use the property, because I agree with you that, you know, Elder County owns it, we should find a way for our folks to get some benefit from it. So, they'll be a benefit from using it, but they'll also get benefit from the dollars coming in, from the aviation folks using it too, so, you know, the economic benefits of.
Yeah, you're right there on aviation, you're right.
Cause I watch, I didn't see him, but our whole.
Just to let him get.
I've got like that bike tracker app on my phone, so I can pull up, I can open my phone, I can see all the planes are, and click on and find out whose plane it is, where they're going, where they've come from, it's kinda cool. You know, I know, I don't know the gentleman, but one of our guys on our committee said, yeah, twice now, it's a big two-engine deal goes over my house, where's that going? Hold up, it's the guy that owns the crisp gas stations, when he's gotta come up here and do the work, he lands at Hamley and they pick him up. So, you know, so there is some, you know.
Business in town, that's.
Businesses like that, that are, you know, and then I can, I'll, I'll get the numbers from Tom, he did, um, like an impact, they figured this, like the shuttle car, the Subaru that they've got.
How many miles?
Oh, no, not even that, he doesn't care about that.
You know, I mean, where, how many miles could you?
Uh, the dollars that that car's worth.
Oh.
They figure that one person coming in for the day, say, eight hundred dollar, between food and gas and trinkets and going on the boat cruises or whatever they do, it's like, might even been like twelve hundred. He says, okay, so now you got, if that pilot, if you're gonna bring two people in, it's twenty-four, if you got four, you know, it just, it fills exponentially.
So, with your car, if one guy's got it, and then the, the other guy flies in.
They'll be able to have each other's contact information.
They'll have it.
Yep, they can work out ahead of time, or they'll have.
Like, good idea.
They got, yeah.
Online schedule.
Tom and, Tom and Ryan have worked on that really hard, on that end of things, to figure out that.
Yeah.
Fuel, uh, literally, they have a car, when the car needs gas, they go down to hillside, they fill it up, give hillside the card, and go. So, they're gonna have to pay for fuel, so, hopefully more dollars they spend, maybe they buy an extra couple t-shirts. Get some more, get some more. Yes, dear.
Bargain.
I like the idea, I, I, I think it's, uh, what, what you're doing as far as trying to, uh, you know, include the residents of Alger County.
Yeah.
But instead of calling it, uh, a campground, can you, can, uh, whether it's aviation, or who does it, you know, these little portable little cabins that don't, can you put a couple of those up there for the pilots, while them, it's just.
They've talked, they've actually brought up, they call, they call them pilot shelters, you know?
Right, that's what I'm.
Not right now, right now, we wanna stick, we wanna keep it basic, we wanna keep it simple, because then again, now we're making even more improvements to cater to a very specific, you know, down the road, maybe.
Yeah.
Right now, right now, they're so, uh, would've been two weekends ago now, the, one of their directors from the RAF was actually in town. So, I got a chance on a Saturday morning to go up there with him, and matter of fact, there's, I should've brought the sign with me, they brought us up, they, they made a big. Matter of fact, I should have brought the sign with me, they brought us out, they, they made a big plaque that says RAF supports Hanley Field. He said, oh, I was just thinking, I wanted to bring this, so he made it up, painted it up and brought it up. They are very excited. They are worth, well, I can explain that, no, they don't do grants like we do apparently. They do it on a reimbursement like a directed giving. You do this, send us the bill, we pay it. But then he also upped it to, up to fifty-three thousand dollars from the original fifty, so.
Any questions?
No. I will move that we tentatively allow pilot camping.
Commissioner Keprosa.
Yes.
Commissioner Livermore.
Yes.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver.
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo, sorry, that was backwards.
Then Spring Conference in Harris, sixteenth and seventeenth, Mike, you said you're gonna be gone?
I, yeah, well, I'll, I'll be here, but I'll be working.
We're gonna wait.
I wanna tell you, I actually see the agenda, see what they're providing. If there's something there that's, that was news, I'll probably go.
Is this one, was one we wanna approve up to X amount of people that they choose to go?
I'm not spending the night, so I'm just gonna go there.
It was more for the room.
Yeah, so I wouldn't be.
I'm not gonna do the room.
No, me either, so.
I did it last time, to get away from, you know, baby and stuff. This one needs a break.
Yeah, I, I would go, but I definitely have, I've got work conflicts those days, so.
It was my first conference and I got to talk a lot more and not having to talk to them, so, but this year, I would go, I would do the hotel.
I'd like to see. Yeah, that's.
And I didn't get a chance to check, it may be on their website. Yeah, just not, I didn't get a chance.
There's no agenda on the website.
Okay, must have been the last one or something that I saw.
Well, once that comes out, if anybody notices it, if they wanna send it around. So we don't have that, we don't have to have anything on, right? Are we having cost savings ideas? Do you money make money, anybody? Unfinished business? Anybody got any? Do you have any unfinished business? Do you have any resolutions?
I, I do have some approach on that though. Uh, Kathy called me and Kathy Pullen called me this morning about the. Deal with Autran, and she'd like to us to make a resolution. To the, to the state about, I think we're, we're losing ninety-five thousand dollars, I think she told me.
In the, in the first.
And.
In their direct funding, but then, yeah, there's gonna be a trickle effect, it's gonna take even more money away.
She was wondering if, like me and you, um, uh, could meet with her, like either Thursday, Wednesday or Thursday?
Wednesday, Thursday, Thursday, Friday. She sent me a copy of the email.
I agree that we should send a letter.
Yeah.
I was literally gonna bring it up under comments.
Oh.
And ask, and ask for, no, and ask for permission, cause I would like to send a letter myself.
Right.
But I, as a commissioner, I feel like I, I sent one other letter and I probably shouldn't have without asking everybody. If I'm signing as a commissioner, I don't wanna. Basically just a reword of what they've got, I mean, we need the public.
Commissioner has their own point of view, they can speak their own mind, but I think we should actually, as a county in whole, do something.
Yeah, she suggested a resolution. So we're both on the resolution committee. We'd have to bring it to the board.
In a timely manner.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've got.
Call the first mayor.
I will look and see, and even if it doesn't, I don't mind it, even if you have to sit with her, I'm fine with that, I'm not worried about.
Oh, please, why don't you wanna write up a resolution?
Yeah, I mean, and if Kathy's got one ready, she can submit, she can just submit the resolution. I think we need to tell the state of Michigan.
Yeah.
Can't, can't play with, no, this is people, I've got a hand, but that's her main mode of transportation option, she no longer drives.
Yep.
Without that, she's stuck at home.
We're calling you.
Yeah, we're calling you, my dad. I had another rant with his dad that that was for many years.
They do our school.
Yeah, they do kids, the young kids.
They do our head starts. They do meals on wheels, they do a lot of that stuff, and also look how many drivers they employ.
You know, I'm gonna reach out to UBCAP too, because a lot of that affects them, I wanna see what they've got. I'll send them an email and see, maybe they, they maybe have a resolution ready to go too, so I'll check with them.
Could be, yeah.
I will send those folks.
They're not gonna be able to take that extra driver to do head start, pick up two or three kids, they're gonna have to choose the public over, hey. Sorry, parents are just gonna have to figure out their own way to get their kids to head start, it's not gonna be a priority.
Yeah, Kathy's got one ready to go. Great, I'd love to see it, cause, yeah, we need to.
So that one's done. Fourteen committee reports.
Well, let's see, I just got done talking about the airport. What else from committee on? Animal shelters and limbo, that's just kind of plodding along, doing its thing, as far as that process goes. The jail locks, we already proved that already, so we'll see that, but we're gonna try and find out funding for next year for the open meeting. I don't think any more than what I, I, that's why I only said what I just said, cause I don't wanna get in trouble for anything. Be careful.
Correspondence. Do they have any correspondence this month? Or comments?
There was a township board meeting and they discussed the housing. And then they vacillated, you know, between. You know, the government owning it versus private enterprise owning it, and then they. At the end, they would entertain a contractor presenting an idea and. And because it would be an arm, arms length transaction for the land. With a private contract, of course, it'd probably be some due restrictions, like, because it's a workforce. Project, a housing project, so. Um, there is a planning commission meeting tomorrow, and the board's gonna present it to the planning commissioner. To see, there's a lot of steps involved in, you know, selling township property. And, uh, to either. You know, like, uh, I forget what, who does the housing for the seniors in Grand Prairie, if it's up there or, you know.
I think it's UBCAP.
UBCAP, yeah.
It's UBCAP.
So they were thinking along those lines too, but then. They were thinking, wow, we don't get any tax on it from that, so.
Yeah, there's, I talked to Pam this morning on that whole thing, and I think right now, we're waiting on the architect to get. Back to us on some preliminary designs, so we can kind of get an idea of how much it's gonna cost. And then we can look at rent and see if it's even feasible.
Feasible, yeah.
You know, that's the whole, the first step.
I think I got most of them, I have to thank everybody for their input. You know, I need to hear every side of everything to be able to make good decisions, so I appreciate that. I appreciate everybody being able to express their opinion politely and professionally. No, I'm serious, I mean, I don't want us to be one of those boards yelling and screaming at each other. It doesn't do any good for the people if we're doing that, so I appreciate that from everybody. I appreciate input from all of our staff as well, cause I still don't know what I'm doing half the time. I almost know what I don't know, almost.
I think that or off me that way.
Agree to disagree.
Yeah. You ever, have you, people ever hear of wealth tax? There's, there's two senators right now trying to push a bill through senate. That, uh, with inflation, your house goes, say, from two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars. That's a well, so on that hundred thousand dollars, you're gonna have to pay a tax. On that hundred thousand dollars, I'm just, it's out there. And that's how they're, that's how they're gonna try and pay this thirty-four trillion dollars on.
No, they're really, really pushing me not to buy this house.
They're, they're, they were saying that the. The American government right now is printing a trillion dollars every hundred days. They're printing it, and. Out of that, that's a hundred thousand dollars a second, if you break that down. Listening to a financial guy.
How much of it are they screwing at Old Money though, same time?
Staff comments?
Coming up next, so May seventh, we have our meeting meetings, that same day, we have the school. It'll be a pretty busy day for me. That's pretty much the most pressing thing up here.
I will not be here for those meetings, so.
Do we wanna move it to a different day? Can we move it to a different day? Does that help you or?
No, no, that, that, it always works, a two day, so a series learning.
And I think, being you said you'll be around all day that day, you could take over, okay, so we got that figured out.
Share, you got anything?
I'm good too, thank you.
I'm open for any questions.
He's not gonna be upset, but don't ask anybody.
Any public comment? Now you're up. Right, you gotta know, I can talk about anything for forever, I don't think I've had any brief comments at all. Can you give us just like a short one?
Anything we should be keeping an eye on?
Yeah.
Well, uh, we've been doing some presentations, um, we just got out of, uh, rural commission. About concerns about policing by Michigan State Police troopers again on western Albert County. It's, uh, it's been doing an interview again where statistically those things aren't lining up, one of the. My, my, my PowerPoint of presentation stuff is not there, but at this point, it seems that there's a considerable concern about whether or not people trust their state police. Based on how they're stopping people at this point. So I, I've, I've had the chance to talk to, uh. I don't remember his appropriate aspect of, of man title, but, uh, Mark Genunziel, the section commander, uh, over at the state police. And there's been dialogue, there's attacks, there's stuff like that, but it's getting to a point where. Um, people are getting stopped and it's, it's very questionable about its constitutionality and the fact that it have on people willing to. Um, report of the crimes, uh, whether or not that they would get. Brushed back or some type, some type of retaliation from other agencies, even going as far as school districts. Whether or not the school districts could bring honor code issues against kids that are getting stopped by state police. Just because they're interacting with them in a way that the schools don't like them to. We're, we're trying to hope that, you know, since a lot of this stuff is stemming on ET Road. Uh, which has a longstanding history of being known for drunk drivers, but. Talking to the prosecutor's office, we're not seeing an increase in, you know, OWI arrests. That hopefully we can just have positive discussions within the community, so that way everything can start to change around a little bit better. And, um, you know, without people making complaints, I don't know how the people in Nigoni are able to make these corrective actions anymore. You know, that's the way that the state police act, is, is through that policy that's set up by the state mothers. Um, these kind of, uh, presentations, we made one at the FIS Township last Thursday. Uh, road commission today, because we actually talked about aspects of the road that made policing difficult. And then tomorrow we'll do Rock River, uh, this is Sarah Whitmer, she's the bar manager at the Trinari Tavern. They've had a lot of problems with customers no longer showing up, um, it, it's, uh. A three hundred and twenty-five percent approximate loss of business on Fridays, because people that are going there needing. Um, you know, that, that level and, uh, they've also got their liquor commission hearing issue. Where we can actually prove that a retired state trooper perjured himself to make sure that those. Charges went through that policy and that, that venue, instead of coming through the real courts here. So, um. Anything we can do to try to overcome this stigma and just have good conversations about this is a win for everybody. Make sure that proper policing is being done, and there's faith in our law enforcement, and that our law enforcement is also acting in ways to deserve it. Um, and, um, we're just trying to spark that up, that's kind of the thing that we're doing right now. And our sheriff department? Literally nothing, there's, there's, there's no comments either way, cause they're all specifically about troopers that are within three years of coming out of the academy. With the exception of the one trooper that is now retired. Uh, but that is the trooper that I had a problem with as a village councilman. Uh, where we witnessed him violating the fourth amendment, every opportunity that he could go into a bar by using liquor commission stuff. And then also related to the Altran stuff, um, we were talking, we're probably gonna send something in for the resolutions committee to, to also include. Um, when they went through their liquor commission hearing, they actually brought charges, because we couldn't get public transportation in Eldred County. They go down to Trinari on a one-thirty AM five limit on a Sunday going into Monday, they brought charges then. And, um, the prosecutor for the attorney general's office actively went out there and said. That it is more than reasonable to get an Uber in Trinari. I called up Uber, they have never delivered or picked up anybody in all the county in the history of their company. So. If, if that's what our public transportation is fighting, that's what we're fighting with liquor commission stuff, it, it, everything is so connected. Um, we're just trying to, I guess, bring awareness and, and open there, so that way the proper, proper path can go, but again. They're not, they're not county official people, they're, they're state troopers, so.
Hey, number nineteen.
I'll make that motion.
I don't think we have to roll call on that.
Commissioner Keprosa.
Yes.
Commissioner Livermore.
Yeah.
Commissioner Livermore, or Nettleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo.
Yes.
One day I want three of you just to say no.
You asked for it.
Well, we wanna hear what, yeah, I mean, we're not everywhere.